I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's ask the government, please remain standing for a moment of silence for our country. Thank you, and good morning. Commissioner Arnold is tied up on something, but she is on the phone with us and will be attending virtually with us. So, good morning, Commissioner Arnold.
Morning.
All right, so let's take a look at the agenda and see what we got here. As we start down through, we have two employees with service recognition awards. We have Michael Piag on IT with five years to service. Michael's not here, but we do thank him for his service and his dedication to the county. And then we have Justin Sprout, who is in our district attorney's office, and he has 10 years, and he's not here either. And we want to thank him for his dedication and service to the county, so.
Thank you, Justin and Michael.
Thank you, Michael and Justin.
Yes, so with that said, we'll now open to public comment on agenda or non-agenda items.
Is that me?
If you want to.
All right, I have a question on number 11. The inmate telephone service rate cap changes.
Yep.
Could you explain that a little bit?
You want me to do that, Elizabeth?
Yeah, go ahead, I didn't hear everything you said, go ahead.
All right, so item 11 on the inmate telephone service rate cap. The FCC put out a federal requirement on what could be charged and what the dollar amount has to be for the use of the phone. So, alls we're doing is complying with the FCC regulations.
And is it an increase or decrease?
Yeah, it's a couple of pennies increase.
Twenty-one cents a minute, isn't it, Alan?
I think so, yes.
Twenty-one cents a minute. Thank you. You're welcome. And then, off the agenda, just in general, I see one of our neighboring counties has gone to having the courthouse open by appointment only because of their rise of COVID cases. Is that anything that we are looking at?
No, we're staying with the same thing we're doing right now. We do ask our employees and the public if they're not feeling well and they're sick not to enter. And the public is still being scanned with the, with the temperature readings as they enter the door.
I think that's all I had on it.
Anything else?
I have something to say.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Go ahead, go ahead, no, you're up.
I wondered if you can explain or if you know anything about the senior center status in the county.
We can. There's been, the senior centers have had a very difficult time during COVID right now. And there is a committee within the area agency on aging taking a look at what is the ideal as we move forward. Most of them that are open are only open one, maybe two days a week. Participation has lessened. I think that has a lot to do with COVID and a fear to go out into the public. Right now, it's one to two days a week for most of them. They're noticing in certain senior centers that, or active living centers is what they're referred to, that participation has gone to almost zero. There are one or two or three in some of them. The Montrose Senior Center, I just got word from the area agency on aging that as of right now, they're going to encourage those participants to go to Fairview, which is five miles away. There's some restrictions regarding space, and they want to include more people out of the public, so they're going to be moving to Fairdale. There was question at one point as to whether or not Forest City's active living center was going to close. Right now, they're working very hard to get people participating in that because, but they're very, they're very, I guess, there's not enough space to do everything that they want to do. So, right now, there's a committee put together to see what the future of these active living centers look like in Susquehanna County and all the other counties that area agency and agency covers, which are four. We actively attend those. We're looking at right now what the best is for our seniors to, we've been talking quite about that, to see if they're planned jives with what we need. So, we're in the midst of doing that right now, and we'll keep you posted. But I guess, easy answer, you know, is that they're in transition right now because of COVID. Where it ends up after COVID, it's kind of too soon to tell. We are trying to ensure that the senior centers that we have right now stay open, but a lot of them have limited space, a lot of them it's hard for other people to access. We do have transportation provided through tree have to get there. But as things start to roll out and occur, we'll let, we'll let individuals know. So, hopefully, that answers your question. It's a lot of stuff, but they've not been able to open fully because of COVID, and they're looking at how they can offer more to seniors and to, to transition to that. What does that senior center look like for 21st century?
So, and the only thing I'll add is Judy's a lot kinder than I am. Basically, the management, we do not manage the senior service centers or the program.
Nice if you did.
So, with that being said, we're all disgusted with it. Basically, the management and the operation of it basically sucks. They do a horrible job as far as I'm concerned.
This is my, you're going to get sorry.
That's okay, do whatever you gotta do.
To take and use, you know, I'm tired of people using COVID and the pandemic as an excuse for incompetency and neglect. And that's what this has come down to. You know, we've used this as an excuse over and over again. We are not serving hot meals in this county. We serve frozen meals, which basically I wouldn't feed my dog. And I don't even have a dog, but anyway. They are horrible, and I know this from a fact, my mom was in the program before she passed.
I know your mother.
And basically, she would get the frozen meals, we'd throw them in the garbage because they were so bad.
And since COVID, that's all the home delivered, they get one hot meal and the rest are frozen.
Yeah, and it's all garbage. So, we are disgusted with it, and I'm glad that, you know, I'm sitting here with Commissioner Herschel and Commissioner Arnold, because they are doing everything they can to review this, to see what options we can do to try and do something better for our seniors in this county.
If there's anything.
Who's in the audience that's asked the question?
Kelly Allen.
Kelly Allen.
Allen, okay. And I would like to say to you, Kelly, if you'd like to sit down with us and any one of us or all of us at any time and discuss things, if you have ideas or brainstorming you'd like to do, we'd be very open to talking with you.
That would be fine with me. I just, I get very discouraged when they close a senior center that's in a housing unit. I mean, they have an absolutely captive audience. If they could get their act together, I mean, there's absolutely no reason for them.
If I can add that, unfortunately, the directive that they're getting from the state is to move away from senior centers. But you're valid and you're concerned because we agree. There are quite a few within our community that are in senior centers, and we have no other option but to put them in senior centers. So, there's, there's a lot of things that won't quite work here that what the state is offering. So, we're taking a look at the whole picture, it is priority to us. We've had many meetings, I'm on the board, I attend the meetings regularly. I can say that, you know, if I can speak for you and Commissioner Arnold, our seniors are top priority in our community.
I don't think there's, not one of the commissioners here that don't feel that our country, our state, and our communities don't do enough for our seniors or our veterans. It appears to us that, you know, once you hit a certain age, that everybody becomes disposable anymore. So, it's a crying shame, and the three of us are going to work hard, as you can tell, to see what we can do to try and, and be respectful to our seniors and our veterans and do everything we can to help them.
Exactly, we've been trying for a year and a half to ensure that the active living center in Forest City doesn't close. Unfortunately, that was the plan when, I think I first started about two years ago, and we have been able to prevent that one from closing.
It's open one day a week for three hours.
Yeah.
And this COVID situation has just caused so much havoc in so many different levels of all of our lives, and it's just in, it's caused more trouble with the depression and isolation that people are feeling, and suicide, and substance abuse, all of it. I mean, it's just all wrapped together in a great big ball, and we're all very concerned about it. Last year at Christmas time, we did a, Judy, tell them about it, we did a Christmas card program.
Yeah, we're doing this year.
All the seniors in the senior building. We joined up, Diane Wurst from our advocacy program, she spearheaded it, and she got the key clubs and some of the high school programs, organizations to get involved and write Christmas cards to all of our elderly and all of our buildings.
Well, we're doing that again this year. We started that, and we've expanded it into nursing homes, elder nursing homes throughout the area. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, the seniors loved it, the kids loved it, the kids felt like they were, you know, doing something really worthwhile and helpful, and the seniors loved getting the mail. It was an awesome program.
And I think you got an announcement to make too, don't you, Commissioner Arnold, about something good for Susquehanna County?
I do, I do, and then I'll let you go on with it. But we got notified this week that Governor Wolf has blessed us with a million dollars for our 911 center that we just put up. So, we're very delighted over that, of course, very grateful and appreciative. And Commissioner Hall, talk a little more about that, please.
Yes, and, you know, we need to, you know, thank, of course, Senator Lisa Baker. She was big on supporting this and getting it into legislation and pushing it through. And, of course, other legislators helped also. But, you know, this is a total of 1.5 million dollars that we've gotten from the state to help with the center, which is fantastic. Again, this entire center has been done without any local tax dollars and between the gas money and the, and grants and this latest R-CAP grant, this thing's totally funded that way. So, we're pretty excited about that. Of course, I will tell you that it is a long process to file enough boxes of paperwork to get the money back to us, but we will be persistent, we will get the money. So, again, that's all great news. Anything else, public comment?
I have a, I think it's for clarification. You talk about COVID and seniors, you know, being important. Isn't it a fact that, that at one point, they went to one day delivery or two days delivery and you, the county agreed to pay for extra deliveries so those visits could happen? And have you?
You are absolutely right, I am glad you brought that up. The county has offered several times to pick up the cost, to pay the difference, to get hot meals, to do anything we can, and the organization that's running it has refused to allow us to do that.
Unfortunately, what happened, and it was around the time that I started, because it is a four-county group that includes Susquehanna, Bradford, Tioga, and Sullivan. It was decided that, that when decisions are made, it's uniform across those four counties, which we have been very, I'd say very loud about that we disagree with. Because we're all rural, doesn't mean that we're all similar in what our needs are. So, when decisions are made, they're blanket decisions across the board. So, that was one example of that, when they decided to go to, I think it was three days a week initially, and now they're down to one. We rely on that program to, to check in on our seniors and make sure that they're getting the care that they need, and we were already aware of the isolation. That was a problem prior to COVID, and this just amplified it. So, that has been an issue, that it's across the board. And we felt, feel as county commissioners, we were elected to represent Susquehanna, not those other counties, so it is often a conflict. So, it's something we're handling, and we're discussing, and we're figuring out, but that's how that's handled and how, that's how decisions are made, unfortunately, within our group that we're currently in.
So, for a fact, they actually cut services?
Absolutely, absolutely, cut services. They're not providing services to our seniors adequately. Again, incompetent, negligent, as far as I'm concerned.
They closed the lot and senior center, which was, had the most people of any senior center in the four counties for the past 15 years.
Yep.
And they closed it.
Yep.
The reason for that one was the building, yeah.
And they've worked with the firemen, and the firemen have tried to work with them for years. I think it was more other issues.
And we could have done other things, if somebody'd come back to the commissioners here and said, listen, I'm telling you right now, all three commissioners here have been in total support of doing everything we can for the seniors. We have offered, offered, offered to pay, to do whatever we had to to keep them open, get the meals delivered, and unfortunately, that agency refuses to work with us. So, we are working on it.
Okay, keep working on it.
We are, we are.
Isn't it a fact also that it's not a matter of finances? Because if I'm, I've heard that they sent back hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they couldn't use it. Is that a fact?
There was a period of time several months ago, and unfortunately, it wasn't mean that I was not at, I had a conflict, but we had a representative there, and there was discussion on them returning several thousand dollars at that time.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think I've said pretty clear how I feel and what I think it is.
They probably got raises maybe within the organization with that money.
It's very difficult to fill management positions too when it's less than $12 an hour, that's, that's tough. And with the crisis, yeah, with the crisis going on, and we have voiced also the need to take a look at that, that amount and figure out what we need to do.
I think that's why they can't get people.
That may be a big part of it.
It's totally part-time job that offers nothing. You know, no benefits, no, and then you want to pay them, you know? So, can you spare, like, who, who in this day and age can take a job like that? And give it their all?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and that's what they need is to need people to give it their all.
Right, all right, anything else on public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll make a motion to close public comment?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, public comments closed, okay. Item two, make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 17 meeting?
I will second that.
You'll make the motion, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Arnold, same by Commissioner Arnold, to approve the minutes of the November 17. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Okay, item three.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to recess the commissioners' meeting and open up the salary board at 9:16 a.m.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, to recess commissioners' open salary board at 9:16 a.m. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we now go to the salary board. Salary board. Any public comment on the salary board? Hearing none, can I get a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close the public comment.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Arnold, same by Commissioner Herschel, close public comment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, need a motion to approve the November 10 salary board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Arnold, same by Commissioner Herschel, to approve the minutes of the November 10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried. Item number three.
Make a motion to ratify and create the full-time non-union supervisory position of human resources generalist at 2067 per hour effective November 22, 2021 to November 22, 2022, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Can I get a motion to close salary board and return to the commissioners' meeting?
I'll make a motion to close salary boards.
I second that.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, same by Commissioner Arnold, close salary board and return the commissioners' meeting at 9:17. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are closed. Mr. Treacher, thank you, have a wonderful day.
You as well.
All right, item number four.
I will make a motion to pay the, to approve the, to ratify or approve the following bills to be paid.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, to approve and ratify the cash disbursement's electronic payments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve the following seminar or travel requests of our employees.
Was that number?
That's number five.
All right, got you, okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve the following seminar and travel request as so stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item number six.
I'll make a motion to ratify and approve a change order for the fire alarm programming and related electrical work for the new public safety center in the amount of $11,230.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold for item six. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried. Item seven.
I'll make a motion to ratify and approve a change order for Maniche Incorporated for bridge four repairs for unused material credit of $10,733.15.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Arnold, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item eight.
I will make, oh, go ahead.
Item number eight.
Did you make a motion?
Yes.
I will, yes. Pension Technology Group tendered a contract with the Pension Technology Group in Boston, yes. It's the, what is that, total cost of $23,000, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Arnold, same by Commissioner Herschel, approve any of the contract with Pension Technology Group in Boston for software system for our pension administration. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number nine.
I will make a motion to appoint the following Susquehanna County Conservation Board of Directors.
I will second that. And.
I shouldn't vote on that, I guess, I'm on it, right?
Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
I abstain.
Okay. You have two yes and one abstain.
Okay.
Item 10.
I'll make a motion to approve extending the terms of the solid waste advisory committee members below through December 31, 2022.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, to approve the extending the terms of solid waste advisory committee members through December 31, 2022. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I will abstain, as I am on it. Item number 11.
I'll make a motion to agree to the amendment of the contract with DSI ITI Incorporated in Virginia to amend the inmate telephone service rate cap that we discussed earlier, the changes as required by the FCC effective December 8, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 11. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 12.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joseph Kemp of Susquehanna County to the Susquehanna County Planning Commission effective January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2026, per the recommendation of the commission.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 13.
I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency and the Northeast Pennsylvania Regional Counterterrorism Task Force for the federal fiscal year 2021 whole national security grant program.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 13. All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item 14.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into a purchase of service contract for children and youth services with Alphoy Village in Latrobe, Pennsylvania for services as outlined in Schedule F, which is attached, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 14. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So carried. Item 15.
I will make a motion to enter into an equipment maintenance contract to Two Way Communications in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania for maintenance of software and equipment for the Susquehanna County 911 effective January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022 at a total cost of $167,597.65.
64 cents?
65 cents.
And some of that was, is grant money, most of that, Chris?
Yeah, it's all 911 funding.
Exactly.
All 911 funding, yes, not out of us, okay. I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 15. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 16.
I will make a motion to approve entering into a memorandum of understanding with Alk Lake School District for Tax Collection Software for use by all tax collectors effective December 8, 2021 until the parties agree to terminate.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 16. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 17.
I'll make a motion to ratify and accept the resignation of Jonathan Zylowitz from the position of full-time corrections officer effective December 12 by 2021 per Warden Jeffrey Heidman.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 17. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 18.
I will make a motion to ratify and approve the transfer of Edward Thomas from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open union eligible position of full-time corrections officer, 1635 per hour, effective November 16, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit and the county policy manual per the recommendation of Warden Jeffrey Heidman.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 18. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 19.
I'll make a motion to ratify and approve the transfer of Brenna Anderson from the position of full-time human resources administrative coordinator to the open non-union position of full-time human resource generalist, 2067 per hour effective November 22, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy manual and government mandated benefits, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 19. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 20.
I'll make a motion to ratify and approve the hiring of Jordan Holtzman, great bend to the open part-time union eligible position of corrections officer, 1635 per hour effective November 23, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Jeffrey Heidman.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 20. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, item 21.
I'll make a motion to ratify and approve the hiring of Melissa McCloskey in Milford's, the open part-time union eligible position of corrections officer at 1635 per hour effective November 23, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Jeffrey Heidman.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 21. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Item 22.
I will make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Dalton Kavanaugh from the position of full-time deputy sheriff effective December 1, 2021, per Sheriff Lance Benedict.
I'll second that motion, and we wish Dalton all the best.
Yes, we do.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 22. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 23.
We're going to make a motion to, I would like to make a motion to ratify and approve the hiring of Lyndon Wilberth of Springville to the open full-time union eligible position of recycling tech at 12:02 per hour, 40 hours per week, effective December 2, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the residual bargaining unit and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of recycling coordinator Jennifer Hibbert.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 23. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, item 24.
I would like to make a motion to ratify and acknowledge the hiring of Kelly Ryerson in Susquehanna to the open union eligible position of full-time second deputy recorder of deeds, register of wills, 1442 per hour, effective December 6, 2021, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the court-related bargaining unit and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Michelle Astorbrook, register of wills and recorder of deeds.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 24. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So carried. Item 25.
I will make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Samantha Wickheiser Edwards from the position of full-time senior real estate tax clerk effective December 17, 2021, per Sarah Siemens, Director of Assessment, Chief Assessor, uh, Chief Assessor.
I'll second that motion. We wish Sam all the best.
Yes, we do.
A motion by Commissioner Herschel, same by Commissioner Arnold, approve item 25. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, item 26.